The regular monthly meeting of the London Town Council. It's good to see everyone with us tonight. At this time, if we could all stand, I'd like to ask Reverend Jason Wilson, we have our invocation followed by pledging leeches. Jason.
Thank you all. Let's pray. Lord, we love you. Thank you for loving us. Thank you, Lord, for the privilege to pray. Thank you, Lord, as we gather for this special occasion. Lord, we lift up these athletes and all they've accomplished. Lord, we're thankful for the town to recognize them, to support them, and to encourage them in what all that they've achieved to do. Lord, we pray bless them in their life and what all that lies ahead for them. We'll direct in that. Thank you, Lord, for this council. Lord, we lift them up to you. Lord, we pray give them wisdom and guidance. Lord, we pray you help them lead our town in a manner that reflects it, that we look to you in all things. Lord, strengthen our homes and our churches, and our churches strengthen our town, our town, our state, our state, our nation. Lord, so much is in need in this time. Lord, we look to you for help. Thank you, Lord, that you can do all things. Thank you, Lord, that you can do as seniorly above all that we can ask. Lord, we ask big things of you. We pray that you lead God and direct in all things said and done. Thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to speak for our town and to see it progress, see it make progress, and see it to grow. And we just pray you give success in all things. Thank you, Lord, for this moment, this opportunity. We ask all things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. With allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and in visible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, members of the council, we're going to add an amendment to edit for the agenda for items, not only agendas. Any member wish to add anything at this time?
I'd like to add sanitation, please.
Sanitation.
Mayor, will we talk about the Dixie water project under all business or town manager report?
Yeah, it's in there.
Okay.
Anything else? Here it is. There's a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor, a motion say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. We're now down to approving amendments from the June 13th regular council meeting and the recent meeting on the 3rd, 20th. I think Diane, if you know this television, you make changes in those minutes. So, have we reflected those against Diane in these amendments?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
That was the 13th and 20th, Mayor.
There you are.
I'd like to make a, on June 13th, Diane Page seven, paragraph, page five. Page one, paragraph two. About effective day, January 1st, 2023. I think that was paid on July 1st, 2022. Increase in pay.
After she saw that in the minutes, she went back and made the rule, like, January the 1st, 2023.
Okay, is she gonna, is she gonna do a credit, or do we just need to move forward and let her start?
Start on February 1st.
Those are my suggestions. One more, Mayor. Page two, paragraph three. In that paragraph, that needs to say monthly pay increase. And that's all that needs for both. That's all, Mayor.
Any other items to be amended on the minutes? Are we editing? Here it is. There's a motion to approve the minutes for those meetings as edited.
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Your second.
Second.
Further discussion? All favor, a motion say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Diane, you know our opinion for any other bills other than what we've already received.
Yes, sir.
Since we've submitted back then.
Yes, sir.
Right, we're now down to the approval of our June accounts payable. Mr. Geller?
Mayor, I'll go ahead and move to approve the June accounts payables presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All favor, a motion say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Okay. Now, we have several young men and women with us tonight who we're very proud of of their accomplishments this past school year. And we're going to recognize them at this time. So, Mayor, you have any, well, if I were having a... Look here. We got three of them standing. Just gonna drag this thing across the floor. I would recognize this as state accomplishments in the high school league, all-state selections, and all-state finishes. So, as I call your name, if you come forward, council might as well gather. You gonna take the picture, Shawn?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead and gather them. Derek Mitchell, where you at there, Derek? I see him still running every day. I get to see Mark every morning and evening. So, you gonna have him out there and do a little reading?
It's hot. It bothers these young guns. It doesn't bother them.
Whereas Derek Mitchell was selected to the 2022 Virginia High School League Class One All-State Track Team. Whereas Derek finished sixth place in the 1600 and third in the 3200. Was he hot?
Yeah.
1600, 3200. Therefore, bill was upheld by the mayor and the town council that Derek be hereby amended for being selected to the 2022 VHSL Class One All-State Track Team. Congratulations. Hang on. Y'all gather round. Picture.
Who does agree with the pictures?
Yeah.
We used to do a team. That's why we had the crowd. Shawn, y'all, yeah, go ahead and sit. Derek, Derek, Derek. Andy Lambert. Andy.
Brady might dissect him. I'll be happy.
Let's see, Andy was All-State Track Team, eighth place in the 100 meter. Is that, is that right?
Yeah.
You want to take that to him?
Sure.
Seth's playing baseball somewhere, isn't he?
He's in Atlanta.
That's one of hers. Well, Seth Cannon, he's had a great year in baseball. First-team All-State baseball team as a pitcher and shortstop. Congratulations to Derek. Dagan Barton.
He didn't make it either. She just said they'd just gone home.
Okay. Well, Dagan is also on second-team All-State baseball team for at-large designation. So, congratulations to Derek. Morgan Barney. You want me to read?
Yes.
Let me read a little bit. Whereas Morgan Barney was selected to the 2022 Virginia High School League First Team All-State softball team as a shortstop. What an honor. Congratulations. Alexis Horn. Alexis, you know her?
Yes.
Whereas Alexis Horn was selected to the 2022 Virginia High School League Second Team All-State softball team at second base. Congratulations. Josiah Wilson.
How are you?
Good.
How'd you get that height front?
When'd you start? Was you, was he kicking the ball around when he was coaching for me at the high school?
I'm getting about four.
Yeah, I've been wrong. Whereas Josiah was selected to the 2022 Virginia High School League Boys First Team All-State Soccer Team at large. Congratulations. Chris, I thought you'd only thank her. Grayson Olsen. Well, Grayson, here you are, sir.
Yes.
Whereas Grayson Olsen was selected to the 2022 Virginia High School League Boys Second Team All-State Soccer Team for four. Congratulations. Emmett Breeden.
Couldn't be here, he's on vacation.
Carter Dillon. Are you young, man?
Yeah.
Are you graduated with this?
No.
Whereas Carter Dillon was selected to the 2022 Virginia High School League Boys Second Team All-State Soccer Team for at-large. Congratulations. If you would, listen, join me if you and Ali should need a little round. Well, I'm just going on the names. Is someone else supposed to have got one? Does someone else make All-State? Raise your hand.
I'm gonna need this to brother.
He just, he's just a supporter.
Oh, okay. Don't, don't do me that way. He was anyway.
I might go set my hat and if I need you.
See, I wonder why. We're right here in the middle. Shawn, you tell us. Are we over? Did you have no way away or not?
Ah, there you go.
Because... I'm gonna get out of the way and let parents take pictures, Shawn. Show me here. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mark had a good one.
He's gonna go away.
No. Okay, now, we're, is Shelly here yet? I'll see her.
Somebody left their purse there.
That's one of those girls.
Yep. Sure did.
It's about to be you and Barney.
That's what it is. Barney's were sitting.
Public request, three minutes. Shawn, can you roll that back up?
Oh, yeah.
Timer on there. Mr. Lambert. I think I saw her there. Randy Burke.
That really hurts my feelings.
Well, you should not even been here, Paul. That shouldn't be a...
That's really my problem, just being...
See, that shouldn't be...
I probably, that's the same. I ain't wanting here tonight or not to jump again, though, Paul, it doesn't wanna. But it's like, I won't be here every month and just say, hey, I don't want you to forget it. I hope you're working on it. We're talking with the Attorney General's office ourselves and everybody else. I'm not gonna let it drop. I'm not gonna let it drop. Because I want, what I'm gonna figure out, if the law's not good, and I'm gonna come to town about 120, and when they get calling, I'll say, we don't have any laws. If that's not a state law, then speaking's not a state law. And one thing I do feel upset over though, is we talked about this first time in May. Y'all said the lady's coming in June. Good, we'll get to talk to her. Seven days after the May meeting, he signed off for his business license. He could not wait one month. He could not wait one month to sign that business license. Come on, people, we don't... This is who we're trying to protect, pray here, these kids. I talked to my mom today. She said, I'm not signing that. I got two kids on, on that stuff. I said, that's fine. And she put up with it. And she, I talked to her husband. He signed it. She said, wait a minute. You know, it looked on for 12 years, ain't people? Remember, it probably went down without, let me have the petition. We've got a petition, and we're gonna keep going with the petition. We've got this, so we're gonna, we're gonna let y'all have it, or the town, or the supervisors have it, and the Attorney General. Right now, we've got about three hundred names out. And we're gonna keep getting, and we're gonna keep getting. I've not talked to anybody in this town, but one today, like I said, she said, they might, they were bringing my child off, or my kids off, and they've been on for 12 years. So, that's the only one that told me no. Well, one guy, he guys ambulance service out there, one of them. He said, we do ambulance service to take people out there. I guess he knows, he wants to go to the competition jail, so he gets open. But, I just, I just want to keep, I mean, I could call out, and I wouldn't date, don't give him that, just don't give him that. Because it means that much. People, that's all we do. We worked with a guy, went and talked to my mom and dad yesterday morning. Good friend of mine, phone rang, he picked it up, looked at it, and I said, and when I answered it, his wife was on the phone, he was crying. I thought the man was saying, he meant more than that or something. No, he didn't talk to me because he was so tore up from Friday night giving his son mouth-to-mouth, keeping the library no- no soap from Brussels. They would have been close. We don't have to have you to talk to him. Said, talk to him for a long time. You know, let me just say, that's not the answer. I told him, I said, that is not the answer. Anybody pays is not the answer. We've sent this paperwork to all y'all, and to the county, everybody else, about freedom of information, because last time I asked what the crime rate was, and we didn't get it. It was told, no, don't say it. I'm gonna send something else and see if that's freedom of information or not. Because I just want to know. Why, that's nothing. We don't have near the crowd tonight, but we gonna get them. We're gonna get the crowd, I'll take three minutes, shut up. But we're gonna get them. But I'll be back next month.
That's fine.
And the good thing is, I retire in September. So, I'm, 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 I'm on the outside, but I feel like a rashler, because I sit out back and pop the door, and come in as the bad guy, and y'all appear as the good guy, or vice versa. I talked to them, plus, I didn't see these on the budget anywhere, these wheels. They on the budget or on another, or...
Mayor, once we get an official response from the Attorney General's office, can we put that on the agenda?
Certainly.
And read that response?
Certainly.
To the public, and then we'll be able to consult our attorney after that and be able to make a determination if we could...
Sure can.
Do anything.
We will. Just in time, Shelly. You gonna catch your breath and let me talk to another gentleman first?
Yeah.
You breathe, you breathe a bit. Eddie.
I may as well handle somebody, but anyway. Last Christmas parade and the fourth July parade, I've been out here next to the Island Center. I've seen patients come out there needing to go home, and they're told they can't go. The parade's nowhere in sight yet. And the officer there told the man, if he went there, he might get in the kitchen. I think somebody needs to be there with enough ramp, but I guess if he was there, it's told to stop the traffic, but somebody needs to be there.
You're in front of the dice, so they need you leaving.
Yeah, this is an elderly lady. She just got finished with the treatment, and she had sat in that hot car for about an hour. I saw in December, and it slipped my mind, I saw a guy freezing in December, same thing. I let it slip in my mind, and I got refreshed from the mirem the other day, so, and then you get an officer there.
We didn't let the chief handle that in the future.
Yeah, they're, to Mr. Hall, they're typically told to, to tell the people alternative routes, that they can go back up, go up the detours and stuff.
Yeah.
I'll address with them to see why.
That guy was told, even after they already get, I, I need to cross Main Street, there just for one second, and then get on a plane, and then hit Russell, like there in my...
You mean just across the road there?
Yeah, they only lane across the road.
I understand, and, and you know, a lot of times, there's some, there's some discordions to the truth, and you know, it could have been that the parade was a little closer or already...
Really?
We don't know. But I'll talk to them and figure out some...
Okay, well, I just figured...
We'll give you the address.
Okay, I like that. I saw it in December, I saw it in January. I mean...
Thanks for coming.
Anyway, it's been a dress.
We'll make sure.
All right, I appreciate it.
Something else we could do, Mayor, in there, is we could notify the Island Center the time of the parade, and that would make probably good sense also, just to let them, let the patients know. We'll, we'll make sure they sit too.
If they have to leave, I don't want, I want them to be able to leave.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Alright, Shelly, now, come forward, Mayor. How are you? How are you?
I'm fine. I'm good.
Okay.
For those of you that don't know me, I'm Shelley Arber. On June 24th, there was an incident in the Jones addition. One of the town trash for bulk pickup came through and took out the power lines. And in that process, snapped a pole, the power lines all came down, which ripped the siding off my mother's house. Now, my mother's not here because she had a prior commitment in Richland, so she couldn't be here. But we're a little concerned over what's been taking place. Versa, the town's insurance called her this morning and told her that case was closed. She had to file with her homeowner's insurance. Town wasn't paying anything except her deductible. So, she's kind of been getting to run around from a little bit of everywhere while things have been taking place. So, the reason we're here is, one, my mother's getting, she's getting older in age. She doesn't quite understand everything that's said sometimes, doesn't always remember what's been said, so... With that being said, we're kind of, my sister and I are kind of jumping in to try to get this taken care of in the correct way.
Well, I'll tell you what. I need your cell number.
It is 701-2757.
Diane, you got these, you got this concern, Diane, so we can talk about it tomorrow. We might, our town manager's out of town this week, but I'll make a call. Let me make a call and find out the status from Mayor's office here and see what they're gonna say, and see what we can find out to cry.
Alright, I do have a video from that day that may answer some questions.
I think we have the report. I went out there. I saw, I'm up in, so did Drew.
Yeah, I know, I don't remember seeing you out there.
Yeah, that's right.
But I did see Drew. But the video that I have, and it's one that I shared on Facebook, you can clearly see that the power lines are attached to the truck. And there is no debris that you can, that's even visible in the, in the back of that truck.
Is that something you can send, you send a video?
Send a picture.
You got the video?
Yeah, I can pull it up.
Okay.
Because I think...
I don't know if that was sent, by the way.
I was not asked for it. I did state, when I was standing there with everybody, that I had a good video.
Okay.
And I wasn't asked for it. But my concern is, as we all know with homeowner's insurance, it's great until you use it. Once you use it, your premiums are going up. And, I mean, my mom didn't get out and jump in that truck and drive it down the road to take out the power.
I understand. We understand your concern.
And at this point, I don't know what you call it, the white foam board insulation or something that's put under the siding as a barrier, that's pretty much gone off the end of the house now with the storms we had. So...
Did it rip that line right down the middle of that siding? Is that the house we're talking about?
Took it straight down.
Yes, so.
Have you an estimate on repairing that siding?
Uh, she was told that the town was handling all that.
So, you all, you all done, not done anything yet?
We do have an estimate.
First one. We do have one for that, for the side.
She wasn't told what to do. All she was told was that, that very day from Versa, was that she needed to go and file a homeowner's claim with her insurance to get it fixed. And that was before anything was, I mean, we didn't, we didn't even have power back on. That's how quick Versa was saying, you go file a claim.
Okay, uh, let me, like I said, you be there, so get up there, buddy, let me collect everything we have, and we'll get up with you.
Alright, I appreciate it.
We will. Okay, we'll get up with you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Okay, we're having new business. The resolution, this item one there is the USDA, well, that is for the police vehicles. It's in, what is it, the very back, Diane?
Yes, sir. Information.
And the information, when we met with USDA, it's a two-page document. We have to, I signed the documents, but I have to, we now have to approve this resolution for the funding for those vehicles. So, that's it, is there a motion to do so?
I'd like to make that special.
Motion to approve the resolution for vehicles is our second.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Any further discussion? All favor, a motion say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. If everybody will still stay in the back, back there, the next item, I believe, is, is the quotes for the HVAC. At the wastewater plant, it's, it's almost in front of that resolution. There's three of them there. Let's see, I think there's three. Southern Air, Starz... And Thermo. So, Diane, I'm gonna read, I want to try to find these figures, and we'll do Southern Air first. Let me see what their figure is. Is it, where is it at there? Oh, there it is. $4,623.46, Southern Air.
Mayor, I like that one, I like that Southern Air quote. They also only have a 30-day labor warranty. The rest of, the rest of the parts fall on manufacturing.
So, hit me up on the next quote. Does that mean we need to add all three of those numbers?
Uh, no, sir, the second quotes, the second quotes, the, you know, man, 16C, which is option two, replacing the supposedly existing heat dump. Uh, no, sir, the second quotes, the second quotes, the, you know, man, sixteen sear, which is option two, replacing the supposedly existing heat pump unit, which is an outside unit.
So wastewater, it's on the second page for the wastewater, right?
Were you looking at the Starnes quote?
Uh-huh.
No, it's the first page, they, they get three different options. First option, can you have me read that to you?
No, 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 no. Well, the lowest option, it needs to be found another day. The Thermo is thirty-nine fifty. So. As always, we wanna make sure that we're comparing apples to apples. Do you all remember, is this, do we have to accept this tonight?
We don't have to, Mayor, but there's a letter in here from Chris Dye, right before those quotes, that talks about how important it is to keep the operation of the labs to maintain steady temperature for both opera, operation and likely equipment. Nothing has been done, we've had.
That's the lab reports?
Yeah, we've had a couple of these, we've had one of these quite recently as well. So we're sitting on sixty days.
Five-year warranty, am I reading that right, from Thermo?
Yes, sir, five-year warranty, and then two years labor, five-year on the compressor.
What's the breakdown for, is it down on warranties on Starnes?
Uh, Starnes, one year parts, a labor, five-year compressor.
What's Counsel's pleasure? Seems to me that the Thermo's cheaper in, has more warranty, am I reading that right?
You are, and it's a sixteen-sear unit, which is, which is a more efficient unit than the Southern Air unit, which is a fourteen-sear. And the quote that you're getting from Starnes there, replacing, it's replacing compressor only, not, not the entire outside unit. I just wanna make sure, the thing, Drew's gotta look and make sure that under a new install, it does not fall under a maintenance contract at the start. That's the only question I have before moving forward. I don't think it does, but I don't know.
Mayor, I think since we have multiple quotes, and that at least one of the quotes falls under the purchase policy of the town manager. I say we let the town manager move forward with replacing instead of repairs. And I don't think it requires a motion because it's under his spending limit.
It's good for me, so we'll defer that, uh, Drew gives that money. Thank you. Thank you. Next item is to sit back for surplus auction. See two lists here. We got one that says town will lend the vehicles equipped to be sold. And this, this other is just, am I reading this, is just our inventory of equipment? So the only, the sheet was certain is what, is the one we're looking at, right, is said to be sold, is that right?
Yes, sir.
The thicker, the thicker part that you have is the inventory that Danny and Drew and I worked on as far as maintenance that needs to be done on the inventory.
Gotcha. So I'm seeing twenty-one items here? Counsel wishes to sell it?
I guess you need to have a motion to tire this surplus property first.
Okay, is there a motion to do that?
I'd like Elijah and Doyle in the Finance Committee to review it, Mayor. I mean, if they're comfortable, Elijah, he'll come up with the spreadsheet and the items, and I'm, I'm good with it, but do we need to?
If you don't go ahead and review it, I mean, if we're not in a hurry, we can do it in August, it's one job for me.
First time. First time I've seen this, Mayor.
It'll be fine, just plan on getting together and reviewing it, and we can put it back on the agenda for August's meeting, Mayor.
Okay.
And the ARC, where's that one at, uh, Miss Diane? It's right behind information, isn't it? Lane Group. Scott, I was thinking, when we got into this grant, we'd already, I guess this makes it official, that they had been selected. You remember, because they were already doing the work.
Yeah, my understanding is that we did do a proposal, or request for proposals, and we didn't receive any. And then they allowed us to move forward with the landing.
This makes it official, is that what that does?
Well, I think they want us to have, have an engineering firm under contract.
Yep.
For the project.
That's right. Looks actually cheap, a lot of those, won't it look good?
Well.
A little bit.
It's more expensive than I thought it was gonna be.
I don't believe that again.
Well, the construction documents. It's like under the first line there, the first item, construction document phase.
Mm-hmm.
Are they not already, I mean, we have a master plan. Well, I guess first of all, is this negotiable, because normally we negotiate, if you remember. You know, the problem here is we don't wanna set ourselves back on a timeline. But yet, every time that we have, uh, narrow it down to one engineering firm, we've always done negotiations, so.
That's good for me, because we have, we, we're not even, I haven't got a file, this side of the document from Richmond, it's from the grant, so that gives us some time, I think. As a matter of fact. And we just think that'll give time. Let Drew, myself, you, Drew and Scott, whoever, I mean, we'll just sit down and ask Matthew. But at the same time, I don't, this thing, we're behind now.
Yeah.
And I, I don't want this, because they've done their due deals, we just need to be able to negotiate with them a little bit. You know what I'm saying? There's no one else, I mean, no one else submitted a proposal.
Right.
And they're familiar with the theater already, so. Every day you want him.
Let me check something quick. I think if I recall, ARC or the DHCD, I'm assuming they're aligned, but they allow you to use up to maybe eighteen percent of the grant funds for A and E services. And of course, this is around ten percent of the grant funds, which is right at fifty thousand, but. You know, I'd still like to negotiate with Matt and see where, you know, see what we can help ourselves. And traditionally, we've helped with the bidding process, but that may not be, ARC may not allow that. So, but, but the construction document phase, I really don't understand, because Mr. Weaver actually did all the, the design has the sound equipment, the, I mean, he worked with Mr. Higgins on that to exactly, you know, what it needed, where the lighting gets set, the stage, the curtains. My understanding is it was all in the master design. So I'm kinda confused on what the construction document phase is, because to me, we actually consulted Mr. Higgins. And we have, you know, we worked with Kent from SRO. So to me, it's not gonna be hard for us to get a, a, a temp, a bid packet to say, here, this is what's recommended, and then allow someone to bid on it. Like, I would think that Lane Group would go through those same organizations to say what we, I mean, they're, they're engineers coming in architects. They're not gonna know which sound, which movie equipment, they're not gonna have to consult somebody like Higgins, anyway, we've already done that.
Well, they're already doing it.
They're already doing it?
They're already doing it, because they're already met with, I mean, they have, you remember, you, we put together the three, four different documents?
Yes.
They have those, and they're putting together the bid documents for that.
Okay.
So they're actually doing out of two already. I would call it this.
But what's the construction document phase for sixteen thousand dollars?
We just need to ask Matthew. So.
What's that?
Here's the.
So it looks like the entire grant.
So the grant's a million dollars, right?
Five hundred thousand.
Five hundred. Well, they're right at the ten percent of forty-nine.
They're right at ten percent. And I think it's gonna be around ten percent for the admin, for cumberland plateau as well, I think it's forty to sixty, or forty to fifty. So, you know, any thousand dollars we can save on the proposal will go towards, you know, go towards the project costs.
Well, but that said, do we prob, do we need to continue a July meeting? Have we, I just, I'm, I'd like to get it resolved before August, because if we get into August and have it to go, to have it settle this, we won't get, we won't have bids put out for anything until September for the interior of the theater. Well, I don't, I mean, I need to, I'm asking for direction, I'm, uh.
I mean, if we, if you can meet within a week, it's not too much to meet with us, and then, but so we can continue till next week. You know, if we can meet, you know, to be able to move forward. I'm in agreement that we need to move forward as quickly as we can, but I don't want to move quickly as we can without talking to them about these numbers, especially some of the stuff we're going through now.
I understand that, I understand that. Can you, can you meet next Monday? Let me do it that way, can you meet next Monday?
For, with Matt and him, or with?
Counsel, leave.
I can make, I can, I can leave work if I have to.
Shoot, we will just make it, this is the item?
Yeah.
Are you, are you working all week?
Well, even if I can, I'd like you and Shane at least.
How about? Are you available this week?
Thursday.
Yep, we, we need to get Matthew up here, Thursday. Are you off all, back?
I'll be Thursday, morning is better for me.
Morning, me, me too. All right, uh, Doyle, can you meet next Monday? Eight, eight, uh, Mary, Brad? Elijah? Like five, six, is what you mean. Help me remember, Diane, we'll leave, set the timer, okay? I'll call, and then if it's all right with the council, I'm gonna contact Matthew and Scott, and I'll meet with Matthew this week and be able to share information. What we could probably do is get Diane to say, after we meet with Matthew, send you all a summary of the meeting prior to Monday's meeting, so you'll have.
Kevin, can we, can we approve this proposal? And do not to, not to exceed ten percent of the, of the grant in fees, in fees for A and E services?
Not to exceed the amount, can we?
And then we don't have to meet, I mean.
Yeah.
That's why I was saying, we don't, we don't just, you all negotiate that with?
Not to exceed the ten percent.
Not to exceed ten percent of the grant.
I mean, you can still meet with Thursday.
Yeah, so.
Sort of takes a women, so it's, I don't wanna try to talk about.
Well, we won't tell them.
We won't tell them.
Yeah, we'll tell them that.
Y'all get it, they're ten, still meet again. Very good. All right.
I'll put that in the form of a motion, Mayor.
Just for a second.
I'll say that.
Further discussion? All favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Vote same side. All right. I guess. Let me get this, start with Drew's report. Theater park, is that the meeting we had with Nathan and all the staff? Out at the park?
And the plans are in the book for them to look at.
They're in there, so Nathan met, he hit, Mel and Drew, Billy, Roger, Robert, and myself on, in here in the building. Which shows the plans for, you remember, we talked, we're talking about parking lot, tiering, and then the gathering place at the top of the, of the sidewalk. And that's where we are right now. He's ready, he's, uh, he has not staked it out as far as the elevation tiers and all that yet. That was his latest renderings that you all have. So that's where we are, we're closer than we've ever been to get that finished, okay?
Is this for discussion, or are we just?
That's an update, so if you have discussion, that's fine.
Um, I just have a quick question on that terrace. Uh, I thought we did away with the terrace.
We did away with the building. You talking about the? You talking about the structure? That's futuristic, if we ever do it.
Okay, well, here's the only thing that I was.
It'll be, it's, what you'll have is a, is a.
Flat concrete?
Flat area with fencing and steps up from the parking lot to the property, from the sidewalk.
My only, the question I had, Mayor, was I felt like in the previous drawings, where that concrete pad was, I thought we were gonna try to utilize as much road vintage as we could for, uh, spill out of the, of the theater after showings, for viewing. It just looks like an awful small pad for that big piece of property. It looks like it's utilizing about forty percent of the road vintage. Does that make sense? For some reason, I had in my mind, maybe from those previous drawings, I thought we were gonna pour a pad the width of that piece of property here.
Well, it became a cost thing.
The terrace did, but not, because I had.
Yeah, I thought we kinda decided to go with more this kinda layout than the.
Yes, that's what I.
Than the gazebo's.
Like no gazebo.
So it gives people places.
They have two of them on each side, and you walked up on top.
Well, I think.
You say that's a little bit of a property.
I think right now, what he's got, he's just got about this much of.
Yes, he does, right.
Yes, concrete and space, but two hundred people are waiting to go in for the next show, or two hundred people flow out. And I'm concerned, I think, what we were talking about, is how many people actually can just fit in there.
Because it's a perfect place, if we make it wide.
If we make it, yes, the property large, property large is what it looks like.
We're gonna listen to music, watch parades.
Yep.
This one has the full.
Well, I was thinking, let, let me just tell Nathan that we want the width of the.
Width of this.
How deep, how deep that we want.
Well, what is this?
From the main street, what's it say?
Twenty feet, Mayor, is that twelve feet? Just twelve, thirty-two, maybe.
And what's the width, right in Mount Texas?
You're gonna have to stop out there and help me deliver, I can't hear that.
Me, it's a small thing right there. I'll do that one there for three days.
You get the dirt up, watch you spill out, it's just. You get the supply, watch you go up there.
I got leaks.
Yeah. So I'm gonna tell Nathan, we need to know by Nathan and Drew.
And I've got eight.
To dig the width.
And then we'll have a group of that, see, like if anybody wants to do these.
Man, we need to get that one to Drew.
Well, Nathan needs to draw the contours based on this, so he'll go ahead and do the earthwork.
Right, yeah. But see, he does deep as night, when he been out there, unless I missed it, which I could have, when we been here. He did not have it all the way across, and maybe he did.
I think he has just what's presented.
Yeah.
But I think, but I think we're losing some really valuable road prints for our citizens.
I agree, yeah, all right. It's telling me, Paul, it's gonna go all the way. Uh, the concrete work, yeah, and the dirt work.
I think when we looked at the budget, and then we looked at how much was on cost, it was canopy. I think when we looked at the budget and then we looked at how much was on cost, it was canopy over the entire length of that. That's when we kinda showed the pay.
Well, we didn't mean for the.
But I think we wanted, we were more interested in the pad than the, than the cover, I think, at this point.
That's right. Alright. I'll look, if it's alright, I'll update, I'll follow up with Nathan, okay? Uh, let's just go ahead. Number two, I think Scott had a question or comments or discussion about the new water line update. And what I know on the update, they waited on, we, obviously, we bought that, you know, we bought that ten inch line. Took forever to get a T section, then they ended up having another part, but everything has come in. So when Drew left here Friday, his anticipation was that everything had arrived. And I was thinking that he said that they would begin this project on the main street side first and work its way around over toward Walmart, around the curb right there past Scott's house. And that was the plan for the, for the start. So is that, has that changed today or anything?
Well, here's. I don't think anything's changed. I think that Drew's done a good job, Billy and everybody's done a good job to prep in order to make sure that we've got a plan if something was to happen with that water line. Uh, once I did get into this month's packet, Mayor, something that I didn't really understand is that we're, in June, we only had a sixteen percent water loss. And that's down from last month. And looking at our water loss from this time last year, we were at twenty-six percent. So, in the minutes also, which probably should have been corrected, but I don't know that anybody misspoke, it says that we're losing a hundred thousand gallons per minute.
I sent your correction on that today.
That was the email we talked about.
So.
A little over there.
I received that email to correct it today. It was like a hundred to a hundred and fifty.
But even a hundred and a hundred and fifty puts us at four, at a hundred puts us at a four million, a four point three million dollar water loss. Gallon water loss. And we only lost three point one million gallons. So it, it's not making sense. So I'm just, I'll, I need to be reassured that number one, that we have a water leak where we think we have a water leak. And number two, that on the distribution side of things, that this is the best route for us to go, is to go to Big Cedar because this water line goes directly across the foreland and it goes from the water, the water plant to quill and tank behind, behind the back of this church. You know, essentially runs through our distribution lines, uh, pumps it up to that tank. So I don't know, it just seems like maybe we oughta have a consult. I'm accepting the fact that it probably might have to go through Big Cedar, and I'm okay with that. It's just, I'm just concerned that we haven't stepped back, maybe had an engineering firm or someone to look at this project when we're about to spend a quarter of a million dollars on possibly up to on this project. Uh, I'm also concerned because one of the employees said that we might not have the equipment to do it ourselves because of the amount of rock. Also, one of the employees had mentioned the reason we didn't do it before was because of the rock, not because it was gonna be a future project. They had to stop, or they stopped because at the fire hydrant there at the corner of Big Cedar, because of the rock. So anyway, that's, I, I was just concerned. I called Drew, talked to Elijah about it, uh, you know, because he's always been, you know, into these numbers as far as the water loss. It just didn't make sense. And I don't know what we've done or seen any report because I understand that maybe Land Group have looked at the water leak or maybe they've checked pressures on one side of the foreland versus the other, but I don't, I haven't officially heard anything from Land Group or Drew that we one hundred percent have a leak there. I know that Richard had used the tools that he has to listen for a leak.
Him and Billy went out at night on two different occasions to list, uh, to locate that leak. Uh, I think Carlton saw it coming out of the rock across his property that, down toward the curb there. And, and that's, and here again, uh, we need, I know we've talked to Vito, I do know that, y'all remember that, about burrowing under the foreland? And we got, if you remember, Drew said that Vito, we got all the permits to do that, move forward.
But the numbers don't make sense.
I understand.
You know what I'm saying? The numbers don't make sense. And, and I would, I just, I would feel better if we cons, I mean, if we consulted an engineering firm before moving forward. I don't know that running, go ahead, Diane.
I don't know if this makes a difference or not, but I talked to Cindy today about the water loss, that seventeen percent. How could it be when losing that much? She said because it's not metered water. That it don't show in the loss.
It's not metered till it gets to the bank, right?
Yeah, but. It's metered from the water plant, that one on the production.
It's metered from the clean, from the monthly water produced. It's metered, it's just not metered for her to track it. We, we produced eighteen point eight million gallons. So it, it's metered, but all these other numbers add up to eighteen point three million gallons. What Scott, the number Scott's running is a hundred gallons per minute. Ends up equilating to four point three two million gallons every thirty days. And our total water loss from what we've produced is only three point one billion.
Well, I, I'm gonna ask, the quickest way to resolve this, I need to know from somebody. And the reason I wanna know is you all remember, that's a ten inch line. If that line fails, it affects water to the entire town and to the county. So what the quickest, I need to know, what's the quickest way? What do you wanna do the quickest way to resolve, uh, the questions that have been asked here?
Here's, here's one thing, Mayor. I, I understand it's a ten inch line. I think the council understands it's a ten inch line. I think we all understand that it's a main. But at any given time, we could have a main break, just like we had on Pittston Road. The numbers aren't adding up to what we think were the information that was given for the type of leak we thought we had.
I, I understand it. I, I just wanna know where we'll be able to find that out.
Sure, so here's the next thing. We can, we can solve these engineering firms on grade nine parking lot. So we've got a major water project here. I know we approved to go ahead and move ahead, to move forward with it, and we already bought the pipe, we bought the fittings, but that's, that's irrelevant because we can resell those. That's no problem at all. But unlike Councilman Gilmore, I feel like looking at these, these, this right here threw me a huge curve ball because I was ready to move forward off the numbers we've been given. But we've also not been given any data.
What Drew said when y'all talked to him?
Um.
About the, did you, did you see any of your?
Drew just, Drew just said he was good on holding off for today for us to talk about tonight. I didn't talk to him.
I talked to him about the numbers because he's a water treatment guy.
Yeah.
Um, and I knew that, I knew that he was experienced with all these numbers, and he said that he didn't understand why that was not reflecting more than seventeen percent. We typically average anywhere between twenty-three and twenty-five percent since I've been on the council. A couple of times, we got up in the thirties, and that's where I expected us to be this month with that size of a leak. And we're not there. We're half of what I expected.
So is Chris our contact, um, Drew does with a water sewer?
Chris, no.
Yes.
And, and Tony, I think we've got a little narrow focus. We've only looked at two options across boring or coming out Big Cedar. I mean, I'd just like to ask Chris, is that the best option?
Sure.
And if it's not, I mean, going to Big Cedar, because it just seems like if we're going to quill and tank with that and we're going to a Big Cedar, I don't, I mean, is there anywhere else to tie in to a ten inch line?
It's good.
Is it, is it smoother sailing, less rocky?
It's road, six inches.
Is it longer, but won't, I mean?
Uh, I said, what, Dolph, what we need from Chris, first of all, we need to know what the incremental loss. That's my first question. And the second question is, if we are losing that, he confirms that we're losing that amount of water.
Or, or.
What are our options?
And, and if, even if we're not, I'm, you know, if we need the redundancy, Tony, you know, I'm okay with moving forward the project. You know what I mean? If we need the redundancy in our water system, do we have a reroute water different ways? But that's, but you're right, yes. The second part is, is this the best way to run the ten inch line? Even if there's a water leak or not a water leak, you know, the plan.
I spoke with Drew.
Did you submit with our distribution, sorry, Elijah?
No, you're fine. I spoke with Drew about that also, Mayor, and I asked him about, was there no way that we could meter, or put a gauge in on both sides of the foreland? That way we could see the difference of what's going in and what's coming out. And he said that they ran a test, a PSI test, uh, from the P, from the PER. And he said it looked like there was about an eighteen to twenty percent PSI difference from one side of the foreland to the other. But that was all of the numbers from a prior, so we don't know, we don't, I don't think we know the time that that test was done. Uh, but that was one thing that he did say, and I think that's why he feels confident that that leak is between Regional Park Road and, uh, Fox Meadows or underneath the foreland there. I think that's why they feel so comfortable about it being there.
Yeah.
It's due to that one test, but, but I think that, I think it's just, it's wise for us to step back and.
It's, I mean, that's good, that's, I mean, that's good.
There's, there's gotta be, there's gotta be, these engineering firms have to have a way of testing the line to see if.
And, and I don't think we gotta meet again or anything. I just think we need to consult and make sure we're doing, you know, that we're, we're running the line where we need to be running the line. I mean, we haven't had an engineer look at that.
Well, we need to verify that loss and make sure it's accurate. And the good thing is, Chris has dug our P E up, so he'll, he might be able to, so help us here pretty quick.
But, but to follow up on that also, I appreciate our guys being actively, being aggressive on the project. Just like Scott said, I think Drew's done a good job. They've, they've allocated the materials, they've ramped up and been ready to start. And that's a, that's good for the town that we've got a crew that's ready to go and come out. Um, I just want to make sure we're pulling the trigger at the right time.
You do. Alright, anything else on the update on the water line?
Could I ask one question, just out of a peanut gallery? Is that line coming out of the tank? By, uh, behind Walmart?
No, it's coming from the water treatment plant.
Come from water treatment plant? Because, uh, when you get into the actual pipe in itself, those are flow meters, and they're not accurate at all on numbers. I work with them all the time. It just lets you know that it's flowing. They get dirt on them and everything else. So maybe something we can clean something to find.
Anything else? Yeah, I don't, three of them, Mayor, I'm recording. Thank you, Randy. Uh, the tax relief status stand, or anyone know where we stand on when those checks might be sent out to the citizens?
It will take a while, uh, because we're just beginning to start to go through and look at each name and make sure they have no other taxes and they are paid and there's nothing else. So we're just gonna try to go alphabetical order and get them all gone through.
Dolph, Dolph wondered if you could get them out before November.
We'll track them though.
They have the level?
And that motion was specific to be processed after July first. We, we know that, that if we've got nuisance issues with properties and, and tax issues with properties, it's gonna take our staff time to get all that nailed down to make sure that we send the relief checks to the correct people that were in good standing with the town.
That's good, I'm good.
They're, they're all over. It's just gonna take a little bit of time, but they, but the citizens that are in good standing will get it.
A P lights it, Dave, what's it about? Who knows?
Uh, what that is, Mayor, is, um, we were able to write A P a, uh, check out of Streets Department for a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, we were hoping for the two hundred and fifty thousand that we had allocated, but due to the administration cost of State Street, uh, which was in our last meeting we spoke about, um, through all the June expenditure that we, we had, uh, a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred eighty-two dollars and ten cents will be sent to A P for, uh, the lighting project.
Was that the first phase of it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, oh. And when did we get our notification from Vito on our allocation for twenty-two, twenty-three? Where we got those, anybody know? Is it gonna be the same quarterly? Is it pretty much the same?
Uh, you could.
Cause we got more money, remember?
You could expect, you could expect probably the same, um, but with, with the new budgets coming out, I'm not sure that the state has completely.
You probably have an issue with it.
I hope it's the same amount as last fiscal on the budget, but that's.
On the budget.
That's what we'll, that's what we projected, the same amount.
I got you.
It could be after the first quarter when they make that.
First check. Alright. Uh, Chief Deskins, Chief Police Report.
Uh, first, thank you for voting on that resolution from U S D A. Should we just?
Make sure you get that Stephanie for state of the morning, or she's gonna wear a U V vote.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I'm really grateful for that. Uh, just some of the numbers for June twenty twenty-two, um, we had seven traffic substances and twenty-one criminal arrests, uh, sixteen misdemeanor arrests, five felony arrests, responded to nineteen total motor vehicle crashes, uh, forty-three assist motors with key vehicles and boostings like that, two hundred and seventy-two calls for service and eight thousand four hundred and seventy-two miles per ton. Excuse you, and update on the D T F report, there was eight successful purchases. And then also, uh, he would hit me out, get us a lot, assisting some officers in special events and stuff too. So he's kind of filling in that fuel roll, was working out pretty good on there. Uh, there was eight purchases of meth at Savox on tow with five of those were in town. He assisted officers on, uh, a couple of drug arrests and some calls, and then he helped with, uh, some court mineral waiver checks and stuff. So, uh, had a busy month there. Let's see, uh, Lieutenant Kaiser came out on his, uh, and helped us quite a bit on the road too. Uh, he helped with special events and everything like that too. He took in, uh, four, uh, let's see, I'm sorry, he took in seven different cases and four with, four with employers, so. C TAC report, we had ten total C TAC transfers for E C O and, um, Cindy also helped us out a lot coming out helping respond to calls. Other than that, I think pretty much business at home.
Do any of our guys, do any of our guys get that, uh, with that C TAC, do they get to work that in?
Yeah, we do, um, s- since they hired another full-time officer, it, it's went down a lot.
Oh, okay.
But our guys do get offered some of that.
Okay. Eric, thank you. Questions from the chief here, anyone?
Eric, I've got a couple of questions. Um, in that police report, I see that we have, uh, the D T F report and Lieutenant Kaiser's report. I was looking at the total summons and arrests, uh, traffic and criminal. Uh, traffic summons were seven. Is there any way that, that you could have this kid do, put each officer's performance in this packet also? Is that an issue?
If you wish to do it.
I, or, it doesn't have to be in here. I, I would like to see it. I, I kind of, I mean, if, if we've got twenty-eight summons and arrests, that's two point eight per officer for the month. You know what I mean? I'd, I'd kind of like to see what kind of performance our officers are, are doing out there. They do a great job. Um, but we got the D T F and Lieutenant Kaiser. I'd just like to see the rest of them and I kind of.
Yeah, yeah, we can break it down. It's, we have, it's one of the harder measurements.
I appreciate it. Let your guys know, we appreciate it.
Is that something you liked in the package tomorrow?
I'd just add it to it.
Thank you, Eric. Mr. Taylor?
Uh, we got the, um, property transfer completed with Miss. Uh, we got the, um, property transfer completed with this deal. Business license cases, I think, are next week. Been waiting on, to hear back from the attorney general.
Uh, Brad, your item sanitation concerns, will be added to the agenda?
Yeah, Mayor, we're just having a abundance of trash placed on the ground, some not even in bags. Our guys have sent photos and videos of different areas in town, and I would just like to find a way that we could help clean up, help the citizens have everything that they need to be able to do that, and just revisit our town code. I mean, our town code states that all trash will be in containers, covered containers. And at times, I mean, my family, that's hard for me to even follow sometimes, but, um, not every single week. And Darryl just left, asking to come back, I mean, he could, he could address better, but I, I think starting out, I, I just wanna bring the attention to the council.
Okay.
And maybe they can read our code and get fresh with that, but, um, closing, at our closing meeting, I'll, I'll probably call the sanitation meeting, committee meeting.
Oh, okay.
Um, and move forward past that. I know we've, we've visited before uh, with ARPA funds and whatnot, and maybe revisit being able to purchase canisters for each citizen in, in home. We just need to do something to help clean up, because it's not right for our citizens that do take care of the property. And nor is it right for our employees to have to pick that field up, so. I just think we could do a little better.
Okay.
Tighten up a little bit.
Well, and then when little by Drew, when he gets back, we'll just keep
I, I'll, I'll call a meeting.
We'll keep adding to his list while he's got.
Well, I'll call a meeting, uh, because I'm getting ready to go on vacation. I'll call a meeting, Drew's home, I'm not home, it's best for August.
Sounds good.
They'll be before the August meeting, Brad.
Yeah.
Um, I'll review that code also, Mayor, but I've gotten some of those pictures. And it's actually kind of mind-blowing in certain areas where trash is being picked up. At times, there could be anywhere from thirty to forty bags of trash on the ground, not in containers, and that's excessive. Very excessive. Um, not sure if that's all town trash or if it's coming from other places or what, I hate to assume that, but if the town code states that it needs to be in a container at the edge of the property, then that's, that's what we need, we need to enforce it, but, um
Is this coming from business units or the
Resident.
House?
There are both. It could be both. There should be. But if it's commercial, I mean, commercial, they should, they should have a dumpster with us.
Maybe, they should have.
They should use it. They should, they should be putting trash on the ground. But when you put, when you put trash bags on the ground, or paper bags, or boxes on the ground that rains on it, these guys, they're out there working in the rain, and then they're trying to pick up soggy boxes that fall apart, and it's just, it's not fair to our employees. Um, it's easy to take trash in the road, just throw it out, but at the same time, if it's supposed to be in containers, then we need to, uh, you know, post that in the newspaper and give our citizens ample amount of time to prepare to get in line with our code.
May, may I ask a question? Is it possible that some of this overflow trash can be from scenarios like I live in where the garbage truck isn't allowed to go down my road? So these people that don't have access to the sanitation department's pickup are just maybe taking it places and leaving it? Is it something like specific locations where you can put a dumpster there maybe for that community?
That's a great question.
Good question. That's something, that's a skill of this committee.
I brought, I brought that idea. These areas that are trouble areas, if we could, start a dumpster and just pick it up. Uh, and do I need to wait to call a meeting, Mayor, or can I go ahead and try and do that?
Well, we got your cameras.
While we're here?
Yeah.
Um I was the first, it's the first Monday long. If that's fine with the council.
I don't have to be here for that, because I won't be here. But go ahead with your committee meeting. Is that Mary and who else, Deanna?
I think I'm a little short. I would, I would be okay if it was in D T.
It's lines in Indiana. Lines in Indiana, okay. I was first, and of course, we'll have to, Ms. Jackson is, is not being
Should be first. Shouldn't be a problem. I don't know.
Sounds good, Mayor.
Sounds good, it's you. Scott, you go. That would be, uh, the day before the race, councilman, I mean, the week before. Yeah. Mayor, I was, while we're over, I ask, uh, one of our sanitation workers that might could address other items or other troubled areas or concerns, or if we wanna wait.
I like to wait.
I will buy them to the committee.
I like for you to wait, please.
Okay.
Hey, we want the committee meeting. What you talked about just there.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Plamen?
That's it.
Do we have any committee reports this evening? At this time, you want a closed session? Section two-point-two dash three-seven-one-one A. For hours, one personnel, and out of seven legal. And out of three acquisition of property. One, three, seven.
So moved, Mayor.
Sir, section? Further. Before we go in, there's a nice note that we got from Steel Cooking at your desk. Uh, all favoritism motions say aye?
Aye.
Close, same side.